Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back. Today, we have the Crestwood School District Board of Education regular meeting, which is dated for Monday, January 25, 2021. I call this meeting to order at 7:25 and ask Madam Secretary to take role.
This is Barry.
Yes.
This is Elvina.
Here.
This is Fuas.
Here.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Myself, Mrs. Kaminsky.
Here.
And Mr. Sabah.
Yes, here.
Mr. Cherry of Quorum.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we will all take note of the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will move on for the reading of our consent agenda and rec- consent agenda.
Okay. The recommended action, the Board of Education approve, sorry, Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the January 25, 2021 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 11, 2021, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 11, 2021.
Support.
Okay. So we have motion read by Madam Secretary, supported by Trustee Barry. The Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the January 25, 2021 board agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 11, 2021, and the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 11, 2021. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have a, please enter, Madam Secretary, a nay for Trustee Fuas. Moving on, I will now turn this over to our business manager, Mrs. Morgan, for a presentation from Taylor Morgan. I'm sorry, approval for the requisitions.
No, I think that the presentation is before the business report.
You're right, my apologies, so I stand corrected, thank you.
Thank you. We have with us tonight our auditors from Taylor Morgan. We have Tom Taylor and Renee Gukian to present our audit report for the audit find, the audits ending June 30 of 2020.
I'm going to share my screen with you, so you can all see my PowerPoint. And before you joined us, we played with it, and David helped us out to, so hopefully, this will work, and you'll be able to see our PowerPoint presentation. Um, let's see. See, there we go. Okay, can you see it?
No.
Not yet. And also, please, everyone, make sure that you have your, your, your study materials in front of you. So if you have any questions, you'll have it right there, I'm sure.
Still don't see Renee.
Let me see. Try this one. Does that work?
No, there's nothing here yet.
Renee, on the bottom of your screen, do you see a present now tab?
That's what I hit.
Okay, and then when it, when it opens up, if you go click your entire screen, and then click on the, whatever you see in that box, and then click Share, and then you should be able to pull up your PowerPoint, and it should show.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Okay. It was just, it was skipping that one step, so is it showing up now?
Yeah.
Right, let's, there we go. All right, now, do we see it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, okay. Technical challenges, I apologize. Okay, so this is the presentation for the Crestwood School District, 1920, year ending June 30, financial statement presentation. The district received an unmodified audit opinion. That's the highest level of assurance possible for the district's financial statements. The audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. The main indicator for a student, school district's financial status is the number of students that they have in the district. It drives how much money they receive from the state in their per pupil allowance and state aid, and it also derives other factors that can impact the success of a district. You'll see, um, over this five-year history, the district suffered an 80, about an 82, um, student loss during 1920 from the year 2018-19. And it had increased, had shown increased growth every year prior to that, and then had a little bit of a decrease last year. Um, the foundation allowance is the amount you receive per pupil from the state of Michigan for your state aid. Do you see last year, there was an increase in state aid, so that helped to offset the decrease in the number of pupils. The district received $8,246 for each of those students last year in 1920 for the educational purposes. Um, this graph shows the school district has received 80% of their, 80% of their revenue in the general fund comes from state aid, which is primarily that per pupil allowance times the number of students in the district. Also, they'll see property taxes there, which is a large portion, which is blended in with the per pupil count, and the, the state of Michigan adjusts for that based on your property tax rolls and the number of students you have in the district, and that's factored into your per pupil allowance and your state aid calculation as well. And then you'll see there's.
If, if I could, just my apologies, because I did have a hand pop up on my screen, so I don't want to take away from your presentation, but if, uh, so Trustee Barry had a question. No? Okay, my apologies, you can continue.
Yeah, that was wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I can't see the hands pop up on my screen anymore, so.
Okay.
But yeah, okay, so the, um, the 80% is from state aid, and then 8% of property taxes, other local revenue is 2%, federal grants, 5% of the district revenue, and then 5% is inter-district transfers. The expenditures in a school district are primarily people-driven. So you'll see 85% plus the 9% of purchased services is all for the employees of the district, so salaries and benefits. So that's primarily what the district spends their general fund dollars on. Um, we do contract outer transportation, so that's why the purchase service number is a little bit higher. Um, but you'll see that a, over 94% almost of our district expenses are from paying for services to the students. This shows the general fund revenues and expenditures for the year. So you look at this past year, 1920, we had the top line, the darker blue, shows just over $47 million in revenue. And our expense line, which is expenditures, which is the lighter blue line, is just over $44 million. So we had about a $2.5 million add to fund balance this past year, which is substantially higher than last year, where we had higher expenditures due to, um, there's about $2 million reflected because of the purchase of the administration building, and also increased contributions into the Internal Service Fund Self-Insurance Fund. Um, this shows the general fund summary. Well, you'll see, um, it's just basically the same as the previous graph, but in number format. So our revenues for last year in the general fund were just over $47 million, and the expenditures were just over $44 million, and we had other financing uses of $606,000, which led to a $2.5 million increase to fund balance. Um, you'll notice in comparison to 2018-19, we had slightly, you know, less revenue by a couple hundred thousand dollars, just under $47 million. Expenditures were higher based on the increased contributions to the Internal Service Fund and the, um, purchase of the administration building, which those were one-time, um, kind of blips, if you will. So those are not repeating from 17 to, um, 18, all the way to 1920. So if you look, 17-18 is more comparative with 1920. Um, if you look at the total expenditures, you know, they're closer in comparison. Um, this shows the history of our general fund fund balance. And we've gone, we're currently at just over $9.5 million in general fund fund balance, that increase of $2.5 million. And then from 17-18 to 18-19, we did have a slight decrease to fund balance of just around $200,000. Um, the reason why it's important that we have such a substantial fund balance is because we have quite a bit of state aid and other things that are not paid to the district in terms of cash payments from the state until after the school year is ended. So the school district ends its year on June 30, but we don't receive all of our state aid fund balance or per pupil allowance, I'm sorry, that we talked about initially, until October. So it's important that, you know, September and October, we receive those payments, and it's important to maintain that fund balance because that eliminates or helps mitigate the need for the district to do any short-term borrowings. Um, because you can see, we had over $8 million owed to us at the end of the year. Um, some of that is state aid from that per pupil allowance, some of it is grant reimbursements from some of the federal programs, but you'll see that number has stayed pretty steady over the past three years. So you generally will have around $8 million owed to you at the end of the year, and if you had a smaller fund balance, you would have to do some short-term borrowings to cover that gap. So the district, a fund balance as a percent of its expenditures, Crestwood is currently at a very healthy 21.42%, um, which equivalates to 38.5 instruction days based on a 180-day school year. Um, the state average a year ago, um, the numbers aren't current through June 30, 2020, for the state average as a whole, but as of June 30, 2019, the average for the state of Michigan was just under 14%, and that's 25 days equivalent. So that shows that Crestwood is healthier than, um, the average district in the state of Michigan. Um, and if you look at the note at the bottom, a 21.42% fund balance is equivalent to a household with $50,000 annual income having $10,710 in a savings account. So that kind of helps put it in perspective, even though, um, the district's numbers are much larger than a $50,000 budget. Um, it does let you know that you have just slightly over a month of, of liquid cash on hand. Um, the district is just wrapping up its 2016 construction bond project with the Capital Projects Fund. Um, and I heard you mention you had a meeting about that just last week. Um, at the end of June 30, um, there was just over $2 million left in that fund. Um, the district will be required to have a special, um, construction fund to audit once that is completed. Um, I've already talked to Ms. Morgan about that. Um, probably trying to schedule that in the next couple, couple of months. Once the, um, funds are spent 95% or you receive certificates of substantial completion for a majority of the projects, um, we can work on that, and that will be another audit report and presentation for the board at that time. Um, I think we're targeting to try to have that done this spring, um, depending on how the final wrapping up of the projects progresses. Um, the food service, um, revenue and expenditures, this shows that the revenue and expenditures being the darker blue and the lighter blue line are fairly even to each other. The expenditures were a little bit higher this year, and then that light green line below the line is, um, actually represents about a $300,000 transfer to the, um, construction fund for some food service equipment that was not covered by the bond project. So there was some, um, capital outlay that ran through the food service fund that was recorded as a transfer from the food service fund to the Capital Projects Fund. And then the Community Education Fund, you'll see there's some revenues, and the revenues are down in that program due to COVID. Um, and expenditures were slightly lower than last year, and then there had to be a general fund contribution to supplement that fund of just about $130,000, I believe, was the number. One of the interesting things to talk about with school districts is their, um, fixed costs that really the district doesn't have much control over. And one of those main costs is the retirement rate, um, that the district contributes, which, um, also contributes to the, um, staff costs. You know, the, um, wages and fringe benefits for your employees. And the retirement rate for the state of Michigan, as you can see, its history over the past few years, um, continues to increase. Um, you know, there is some of that supplemented through the, um, state aid. As you can see, for 2021, there was a rate offset, so the net that it cost the district was 28.21%. That's the first footnote line on the bottom there. So that does have a pretty substantial impact on district budgeting and things of that nature, and is something to always consider when you're, um, negotiating contracts and things of that nature. Um, as you can see here, the MIPSers, which is the Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System, um, the dark blue line is the number of active working employees that are contributing into the MIPSer program. The light blue line, which you'll see just last year, or 2018, so two years ago now, the light blue line crossed the dark blue line, so there are more people drawing out of the MIPSer pool than are contributing into it. And that will, that will cause the rate to continue to increase as there's less active participants in the fund contributing to pay into the retirement fund where the retirees are drawing out of. So that will also continue to drive that rate up. Some new, um, some new GASB, um, pronouncements that GASB 84 was supposed to be implemented last school year, but with COVID, they did postpone some of the implementations that were required, initially supposed to be impacted in June 30, 2020. So this one will be, um, required to be implemented in the 2021 school year. It's a new special revenue fund to primarily hold the fiduciary activities, which is your internal accounts and special revenue funds. That those will be, um, you know, revenues and expenditures both will be budgeted and reported in your general fund, and, or I'm sorry, in the special revenue fund, Fund 29, and will be under board control. So, um, that's all those, um, you know, the high school internal accounts, um, some of the other, um, levels, you know, the sports clubs, things of that nature that will be reflected in that special revenue fund. It's been held in a fiduciary fund up until this point, so it's just changing the presentation of those funds. And then also, there's, um, GASB 87 leases was also postponed until the 2021 school year, which will require the school district to recognize certain, um, leases that were classified as app, as operating leases will need to be, um, treated as more similar to a capital lease. So, um, we'll have to work with the business office if you have, the district has any leases that would fall under that category. Um, I don't think that you guys will have any, I think mostly you just have copy machine leases at that. Um, you know, some districts have auto fleets and things of that nature, which would be a much more significant impact to the district, but this one, I don't think will have much of an impact on your district at all. Okay. So that's the end of our presentation for the, um, financial statements. We also had, um, management letter, which should have been included loosely in your, um, audit report, so it's not actually part of the audit report. It's a separate letter that is sent to the state with the audit report. Um, let me see here. There we go. All right, so, um, the comments that we had in the management letter are on, there's material audit adjustments that we had for the year that basically, um, talk about closing the books at the end of the school district, at the end of the fiscal year, and, um, we had some adjustments to some of the initial trial balances and some of the federal revenues, just booking them as deferred revenue on due to timing issues and things of that nature. But we worked with the financial staff to take care of all that and get those reflected correctly. Um, so we just recommend that there's closing procedures that are done at periodic intervals throughout the year. We talked with your business office, and many of those have already been implemented. Um, you know, last year was a year of transition for a lot of your central office staff. You know, you had a lot of new staff in there, and I think, um, as we were auditing, we had to audit before the new staff, we had to audit the whole year, so before the new staff started and after. So some of our comments may be pertaining to before the new staff took over and implemented new policies and procedures. So a lot of the things have already been implemented um, as of the time we were wrapping up and finalizing the audit. Um, they were just in the process of being changed during the school year, so we felt necessary to mention them in our audit. Um, and then federal grant compliance. I know both of the individuals and programs that we tested had new staff members, um, new directors in charge of those programs. So it was just, I think, them getting familiar with it and understanding what sort of documentation needed to be on hand, um, keeping track of personal activity reports and time studies and things of that nature um, for that reporting for their federal programs. Um, and then payroll controls, that there were some times where an employee was paid on, without their time sheet being approved by their supervisor. And I do know there have been additional controls implemented for that as well. Um, and then the Internal Service Fund, where you're self-insured, um, that that balance is steadily increasing, and, um, we recommend that the district hasn't, evaluates that and makes some adjustments on that on a go-forward basis um, to get that carried fund balance in that fund to a more reasonable level. And then we also just commented on the pending vendor dispute, um, which I'm sure you're all aware, um, that that's currently pending during remediation. So I don't know if that's been settled yet since we last talked with Ms. Morgan or anything. Okay, so that's still going on, okay? Um, so I don't know if there's any questions about any of that, or any comments on the report, if anyone has any.
Okay, at this time, are there any members of the board that have any questions regarding the audit?
Um, I, I do have a comment, if I may, President.
Yeah, I just need to make, yep, I just want to make sure that you're recognized. So with that, I see, and I will call on, uh, Trustee Barry.
Um, I guess, uh, Dr. Lazar, the time sheet being approved by an authorized supervisor or Penny, um, with us implementing, um, help me with that, the new, um, calling in for absences and such, will that help with that situation?
That doesn't, the A-SOP does not help with that situation. That situation will help, um, with some implementations of different timekeeping systems, also with making sure that signatures are being obtained by the supervisors.
Okay, so has that already been implemented and?
Some of them have, yes, um, for the time being, but there's some other things that will be implemented once the software is in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, uh, Trustee Kaminsky?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, thank the audit firm for the way it was presented to us. I think this is a lot clearer than some of the presentations we've had in the past. So I appreciate that. And then, uh, to our administration, um, amazing, and, uh, thank you. Um, most other districts can't be as excited as we are that our general fund has gone up and that all of our balances are in such good shape. So, um, to all of administration who works so well together, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? All right. Okay, um, do you want to continue? Uh, no, you covered everything, Penny, I'll turn that back over to you.
I do want to say, though, if I could, that, um, Penny was great to work with, and Dr. Mousalem, they both, and all of Penny's staff, they bent over backwards to get us the information we needed, and, um, you know, it was the challenge. Anytime we work, do a first-year audit, you know, is, is more work on our end as well, you know, learning the district and familiarizing ourselves with the district. And I know that they were both new the same year we were new. So, you know, it was, um, you know, it was, we all were able to work together and work through some things that we had questions on, and, um, things came out okay in the long run. So it, it was a rough year with COVID and trying to do things remote and/or, you know, just a little different this year for everyone. So, as you all have lived it too, so. Because I want to thank them for their help up through all of this process as well.
Absolutely, and, and I will comment. Uh, I'm gonna allow Trustee, uh, Barry to make a comment, and then I'll say something. So before I turn it back over to Penny.
Okay.
Uh, Trustee Barry?
I just did have a question. I'm reading, um, where it says significant audit findings. Um, it says management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Um, does that include what is audited? Like, does management get to choose what is audited, or is that?
Actually, the state of Michigan dictates what we audit. Um, so, you know, in our, in our government auditing standards, and, you know, it's kind of like the higher being, you know, they tell us and dictate what we have to audit. Um, so, you know, and then we delegate, or, you know, inquire of certain things when we work with the staff at the district. So they don't choose what we look at, you know, and actually, they're required to let us see anything we request to see. So, you know, um, if we did not have a district that cooperated fully with us, you wouldn't get an unmodified audit opinion because we would have to put some sort of limitation on our audit opinion that, um, we felt that the district was not being open and transparent.
Okay, that's, that's good to hear, and that's what I want the public to, to hear, so they know that this is something that we have no control over. The state and you, um, take over. Um, so I did, I did want to say, I'm gonna echo what Sue, uh, uh, Trustee Kaminsky said. This is impressive that we were able to put that $2 million back into the general fund. Um, and like you said, we're very thankful that we have a healthy fund, and we don't have to worry. So thank you so much to the, to the admins for taking care of that.
And, uh, if I could, before I turn it over to Penny, I think both you, Nadia and Sue are correct. Uh, the district and its administration has been very transparent, and I cannot see anyone in that office wanting to keep anything from, especially since it is dictated by the state, what will be provided to you. Uh, so, I know they've been working very diligently to make sure that, you know, information is, is always made available to whoever it may be requiring it or inquiring for it as long as it, uh, is not of confidential in nature. But what I do want to say is that, uh, in, regarding the finances, the, the fund equity, I could probably tell you of a number of districts that surround us that wish they could be in our shoes right now. Uh, this administration has worked very diligently to not just, you know, save money, uh, but making sure that the dollar is stretched as far as it can be stretched. And Penny has been the one on top of that, making sure, hey, and I think I heard it this way, if you have a dollar and you spend a dollar, you have nothing else left in your pocket, plain and simple, we're all done. So thank you, and thank you for making this presentation really, um, uh, straightforward. Uh, there's a few times that our presentations have been, questions are asked, and they're always meant to be asked, but it was like way off, but everything was very, very right to the point, so thank you. Okay, Penny, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, and I just want to thank the auditors. Um, I know that this, there were lots of hours that I spent on the phone with Renee, um, not exactly happy with what she was asking for, but, so I do appreciate her time and their patience with us to get that information. Um, the first item on our business report is the approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming events, needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchased orders will be sent out.
All right, and with that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Trustee Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 5A1.
Support.
Support, and that comes from Trustee Barry. So the motion to recommended action is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 5A1. Are there any questions? So I just saw something pop up. Are there, I lost whatever some, oh, here it is.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
And let's go for the record, we have opposition from Trustee Fuas. All right, Penny, back to you.
Number two, acceptance of the June 30, 2020 audit, audited financial statements. Taylor and Morgan, our independent auditors, made a presentation to the Board of Education on the results of the financial statements and Single Audit Act compliance report for the year ended June 30, 2020.
President Garcia?
Yes, Trustee Barry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education accepts the audit reports and the SAS 115 Required Communication Letter for the year ended June 30, 2020 as presented by our independent auditors, Taylor and Morgan.
And support? Anyone? Okay, so we have support from Trustee Kaminsky. The motion is moved by Trustee Barry that the Crestwood Board of Education accepts the audit report, which is, and the SAS 115 Required Communication Letter for the year ending June 30, 2020, as presented by our independent auditor. June 30th, 2020, as presented by our independent auditors, Taylor, Morgan, which is by trustee Kaminsky. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right.
All right, thank you. Number three, approval of Sunbelt contract. Over the past several months, the Crestwood administration has been attempting to hire a special education teacher required to meet the student IEP needs. Unfortunately, after continuous attempts to recruit a teacher, we've been unable to find a highly qualified candidate this time. Our efforts have been further impeded due to COVID challenges. We have previously worked with Sunbelt staffing to fill, fill some of the harder to acquire positions. Therefore, in order to ensure that all IEP requirements in a timely manner and in accordance with legal obligation, administration recommends contracting with Sunbelt staffing. The company is willing to create a short-term agreement, January 26, 2021, through June 11, 2021, which will allow the district to continue the efforts to recruit our own teacher to fill the position. Upon the end of the contract, we will revisit the need to renew the contract based on the outcome of the recruitment efforts. The contract will consist of 37.5 hours per week in the amount of $75.25 per hour for 16 weeks, not to exceed $50,000. See attached agreement.
Mr. President?
Okay, trustee Elzayet?
I recommend that the Crestwood School Board of Education approve the contract with Sunbelt staffing through June 11, 2021, per attachment 5A3.
Support.
And support, I believe, was that you, trustee Barry? Okay. So the recommended action is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Sunbelt staffing through June 11, 2021, and that's per attachment 5A3. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right, number four, approval of the Plant Moran payment. The Crestwood School District has been working to finalize all the bond projects previously authorized and make final payments to companies involved. Plant Moran Cressa has billed the district for their final payment of $25,000. By paying the amount of the district's obligation to the company will be complete. Due to the fact that there are four projects currently being finished, the administration would like to divide the final payment into two payments of $12,500 each. The first payment would be made by March, January 31st, 2021, and the final payment made upon completion of the open projects being finished.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Barry?
Kaminsky, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the current payment to Plant Moran Cressa for $12,500. See attached 5A4.
Support.
With that, do we have support, which I think was originally from trustee Barry? Is that still, you're, okay. All right, so with that, we have a recommended action of the Crestwood Board of Education approve the current payment to Plant Moran for $12,500. See attachment 5A4. I'm sorry, for the record, let's make it correct, Plant Moran Cressa for $12,500. See attachment 5A4. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that this was the best alternative for all, knowing that we're protecting ourselves and we're not giving them the full amount until everything is complete. So, yeah.
I would agree with you in the fact that there was also a savings on behalf of the district, so that goes towards our general, uh, our fund equity. So that was good and it was just very nice to see how diligent Penny and Scott were in working with the firms to.
And the board. And the board.
I'll say the subcommittee, I'll say the subcommittee, but now the board as a whole to come to a, a final conclusion and once this project is completed, which hopefully will be in, within the next 30 days, uh, we will be done, we will be done. So thank you.
Can I just, one more comment? If Penny can let the public know how much was saved by us taking this on and coming to an agreement.
Oh, yes, that is.
It, it's.
2,000?
I was wondering that. Um, it was approximately, overall, it was approximately $6,000 from Plant Moran. But I can get you the final number for the next meeting. I just didn't.
That would be, yeah, that would be fine, that would be fine. Or, or an update is fine as well. But I think it is important just for, Nadia, you're right, just the public knowing that there was a savings to our district for that. Okay, so hearing, uh, no other comments, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Sabo abstains.
I'm sorry?
Trustee Sabo abstains from this vote.
All right, so please note for the record, Madam Secretary, that there is an abstain from the vote and that is from trustee Sabo. Okay, moving on.
The final item that I have for today is the approval of partners and architect payments. The Crestwood School District has been working to finalize all of the bond projects previously authorized and make final payments to companies involved. Partners in Architecture has billed the district for their final payment of $89,500, which includes additional costs for work performed above the original scope of work. Partners in Architecture have been extremely instrumental in finalizing the replacement of the epoxy floors at Crestwood High School. Each effect, there are four projects currently being finished and the administration would like to divide the final payment into two payments of $70,000 and $19,500. The first payment would be made by January 31st, 2021, and the final payment made upon completion of the open projects being finished. These payments will conclude the payment to Partners in Architecture and fill out the remaining barge and projects that have purchased.
All right, so with that, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. President?
Trustee Barry?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the current payment to Partners in Architecture for $70,000. See attachment 5A5.
All right, and do we have support?
Support.
And support comes from trustee Kaminsky. That the recommended action is the Crestwood Board of Education approve the current payment to Partners in, uh, Architecture for $70,000. See attachment 5A5. Are there any questions?
Again, uh, Mr. Chair?
Trustee Barry, yes.
I know that there was a significant amount saved here, um, and we were holding and by us doing this. Do you remember the numbers on that, Penny?
I do not. I'll give those for you.
Okay, thank you.
My, our apologies and Penny, sorry, hopefully I didn't catch you off guard and that was just, yeah, there, because these were two big projects, that there were some dollars that were.
Actually, I think I have it, but go ahead.
Um, you know, I, I.
Mr. President, if we don't have it, um, we'll get it to you Friday, but I would like it to be announced at the next board meeting as well.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that the public is aware of how much money we saved.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think it's important just so that, that they can see exactly how these dollars were spent. And I don't think honestly, Dr. Musalem, that we've ever done a, a final closure on the project. So maybe that's something that could be, that's a lot, but something for the future so that it's a complete financial breakdown to show, you know, where the dollars were spent, where the savings were.
Yeah.
And what was, was, a lot of things are not seen, you know.
Exactly. And, yeah, and I don't want to speak for Penny, but that'll be part of that whole audit presentation, when we close everything out. And then Penny will also be able to add more information to that, that would be sensible for the community. So we'll get that out in advance so everyone can be there to watch it step by step.
Sounds good, thank you. So with that, I will take, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
And for the record, please show, uh, Madam Secretary, that there is a nay from trustee Fowas. Thank you, moving on. There are no more additionals, so thank you, Pen, Mrs. Morgan?
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for your presentation and now, uh, I believe I'm off to Dr. Lazar. Am I, give me a second here, because I'm, I'm flipping pages back and forth, but I'm almost certain that, uh, yes. So with that, I will now turn it over to our Director of Human Resources and Student Services, Dr. Lazar.
Good evening, everybody. Today, um, we have five action items on the personnel report. Uh, the first is for the appointment of a custodian at Kinlock Elementary and the recommendation is for Ms. Amanda Fraser. Ms. Fraser has worked in providing housekeeping services in the hospitality industry for the past two years and has also worked as a receptionist. She prides herself on being a team player and is dedicated to doing a good job.
Mr. President?
Um, trustee Barry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Amanda Fraser according to the M E A custodial agreement, custodial step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A1.
Support.
Uh, support, I, was that you, uh, Madam Secretary? Okay, so, all right, so we have a recommended action from trustee Barry, supported by trustee Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Amanda Fraser according to the M E A custodial agreement, custodial, custodial step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A1. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Dr. Lazar?
The second action item today is a recommendation to fill the custodial position at Hillcrest Elementary and the recommendation is for Ms. Lisa Garrett Iwa. Um, Ms. Garrett has worked with a janitorial services company for the past six years. She prides herself on being a hardworking and dependable employee.
Mr. President?
Uh, trustee Elzayet?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lisa Garrett Iwa according to the M E A custodial agreement, custodial step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A2.
Support.
And we have support from trustee Barry. And the recommended action that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Lisa Garrett Iwa according to the M E A custodial agreement, custodial step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A2. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our third recommendation today is to fill a district-wide maintenance position. The recommendation is for Mr. Dylan White. Mr. White has worked in the building and grounds or similar positions for the past three years, most recently for the Garden City Schools. He is looking forward to joining our team where he can begin a career job.
Mr. President?
Uh, trustee Barry?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dylan White according to the M E A custodial agreement, maintenance step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 6A3.
Support.
And, okay, so I have a motion from Mrs. Barry, supported by, uh, I'm sorry, trustee Barry, supported by trustee Elzayet, that the recommended action, the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Dylan White according to the M E A custodial agreement, maintenance step one, effective pending, acceptable criminal background, background check and other employment documentation as required by law, see attachment 6A3. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just want to comment, um, I'm actually impressed to see that we're getting people that are coming to us with that, um, with that knowledge. Um, and we're very lucky because I know other districts are really having a hard time filling those positions.
And the three of them, we're all very excited to be joining the team, so it, it was nice having conversations with them.
Excellent, all right. All those in favor signify by stating, oh, I'm sorry, if there are no other questions and I see none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before I read our next two, uh, action items, if I may, um, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, the next two action items are for current employees of the Crestwood Schools and so I just wanted to take a minute, um, before reading their recommendations to thank them both for their dedication to our schools. They are changes in classification.
Okay.
The first one is in food services at Crestwood High School for Ms. Tagrid Bittar. Ms. Bittar has been working for the Crestwood Schools and the Food Service Department for the past 11 years. Um, and so she will be, uh, changing her classification to, um.
What'd you do?
Uh, cooks helper?
Yes, correct.
Okay, oh, yes.
From six to half hours to seven, sorry.
All right, uh, so.
Mr. President?
Uh, yes, trustee Kaminsky?
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classification of Tagrid Bittars from 6.5 hour cooks helper to 7 hour cooks helper.
All right, support, I think was from trustee Barry?
Janoon.
I'm sorry, trustee Janoon, my apologies. Uh, so that, uh, the recommended action is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classification for Tagrid Bittar from 6.5 hour cooks helper to a 7 hour cooks helper. Although, uh, are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Right, and our last recommendation tonight is also in food services at Crestwood High School for Ms. Fatma Barudi. Ms. Barudi has been working with Crestwood Schools in the Food Service Department for the past eight years and the recommendation is for her to move from a 5-hour cafeteria assistant to 6 and 1/2 hour cooks helper.
Mr. Chair?
I believe I heard, this time I heard Mrs. Janoon first.
Oh, yeah.
I did, I did, okay.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classification of Fatma Barudi from 5-hour cafeteria assistant to 6 and 1/2 hour cooks helper.
Support.
I, Nadia, I think I heard Sue first, so am I correct, Madam Secretary?
It was Danielle. Danielle.
Oh, gee. I'm looking at the screen, you, it, it's so hard looking at the screen because you'll, you, you focus on one person, you see the movement and I swear I saw the lips move, so I apologize. Okay, so we have support from trustee Elzayet. Uh, and the motion is that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the change in classification for Fatma Barudi from 5-hour cafeteria assistant to a 6.5 hour cooks helper. Are there any questions? Hearing none.
I just want to say congratulations to both candidates, uh, now we're happy to have them join us with more hours.
Absolutely. So hearing none, or any others? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion passes. Okay, I see that there's no informational items, Dr. Lazar. But again, I believe that we truly, your, we appreciate your help and of course your service and the fact that you're in the office quite a bit, so thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, with that, I will now turn this over to our superintendent for his superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, good evening, board, good evening, community. So we have one action item and two informational items. So before I get into the actual item, which is the request that the board, uh, continue the fall 2020 online plan, I would like to let the community know that we are in the final phases, um, of our subcommittee meetings and discussions on what the reintegration plan will look like. Um, I would like the community and the board to know that, um, as if you've been following the headlines, you know, President Biden has requested that, you know, students are back in school within 100 days, as long as we can do it safely. And the governor's office is asking, hopefully by March 1st, as long as we can do it safely, as well as, you know, the rollout of the vaccine. So all of these things play a role. We are finishing up our final touches on what we would like the reintegration plan to look like for March and we will have that out to the community, um, very shortly, most likely the, uh, beginning of next week. That is our goal, to have that out to the community with explanation. So with that said, according to state law, uh, Mr. President, we still, every 30 days must vote on where we are in reference to our, uh, online plan and today's board meeting is that 30-day mark, within that 30-day mark. So with that said, Mr. President, I am requesting that the board approve continuation of the online plan with reconsideration at the February 22nd, 2021 regular board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm here. I'm sorry, um, it tells me that there's a bunch of things running my computer in the background. I'm, I, my apologies. Uh, is Dr. Musalem still there? That was the last, I just heard you. Uh, is Dr. Musalem still there? That was the last, I just heard you reading the very, very beginning of your motion, so my apologies. Was it completely read?
Yes.
It was, Mr. President, yes.
Thank you, okay.
And Mr. Chair.
So I have a motion from, I'm sorry, Mrs. Barry.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continuation of the online fall 2020 plan.
Support.
Okay, so I have a motion from Mrs. Barry. With support from trustee Kaminsky, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the continuation of the online fall 2020 plan. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in fig, all those in favor by by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, your informational items.
Yep, so we have just a couple informational items. I'd like to, uh, I'm, I'm very excited to say that. Our Pixelot livestream system is, has been installed, and so what is that? Well, the board so graciously agreed and approved. Back when this pandemic all started, but we also agreed that moving forward, this is the future of the district as well as schools across the nation. That we will have live streaming of our athletics. Um, so that the installation has been completed. Mr. Mike Schley will be getting all the information out, and we will have a dedicated page on our website with all that information as well. Moreover, in conversations with Mr. Schley, as well as the technology department, we are also looking to see how we can livestream those on our cable channel within the Dearborn Heights area as well. So, uh, the nice thing will be is that, um, you know, uh, families can go and they can watch these events being livestreamed. And then we're hoping that we could have them recorded and it'll be a great, uh, keepsake for the future. And I do want to emphasize, due to the Board of Education's agreement, and I thank you for this, we will not be charging a subscription for this service. This will be free of charge. As a district, we will cover the cost. So this is an exciting movement forward with us truly wanting to be a 21st century school district.
Very good. Uh, I believe you had, um, and if you don't, I mean, I can take your thunder from you. There's a parent meeting scheduled on the 8th. At 5:00 P. M.
Oh, yes, yes. I, was, yes, did I, I, no, I'm sorry, yes, it's, um, my apologies, yes. So February 8th will be the next board meeting. And during that study session, we are going to, uh, I am requesting from the board that the study session begin at 5:00 P. M. Um, it'd be scheduled to be from 5:00 P. M. To 6:30 P. M. Um, so to give us some time in between to get into the board meeting. Um, we will publicize this, we will send out all the information. Uh, this will be an opportunity after the community, the community will have, uh, a, a, a good week to review the plan that we're going to be putting forward. And it'll give the board, the community an opportunity to call in and ask questions about the plan, uh, get further details. So this, I am requesting from the board that the February 8th study session, uh, be for 5:00 P. M. So we can have parent and community, uh, discussion on the possible reintegration plan.
All right, I don't know, is there anyone here that would not, uh, be able to attend, uh, at that 5:00 P. M. Hour? Okay, not seeing anyone or any motions? So yes, I, I don't see that that would be an issue to begin that meeting. Uh, and then I would just ask that the wonderful secretary, uh, Kristen, just make sure that she sets it for our time at 4:45, uh, so that we're all ready to go.
Will do.
Okay.
And then the last piece of information, Mr. President, is I would like to thank the Board of Education. Um, this board, uh, you know, the, the previous members that I served with and the current members that I serve with now. We truly, you know, we're not always going to agree, and that's normal. Think about, you know, those that you love, you don't always agree with them, but that's what makes your love a little stronger. This Board of Education has truly supported the direction that we as a school district need to go. And we truly illustrated what it means to be a team of eight. The auditor's report today is not just because of the administration, although I thank you for the, the praise for all of our administration and all of our teachers and the unions and everyone that worked together on this. But the Board of Education has been in lockstep and barrel with the direction we need to go. You gave us the authority to make decisions. You allowed us to present those decisions to you. You gave us positive feedback and we had positive dialogue. I want to say that these, all seven board members and the administrative team, the teachers, this entire district. I am the superintendent, and it is my responsibility that I look over everyone in this district. Because our district is strong together, weak, and we are weak divided. And I will tell you, this COVID, this pandemic has made us much stronger. We have had many difficult conversations. We have had some tough times. You know, and I have learned, you know, probably about three, four years ago, I truly learned that everything in life I have to look at in an optimistic viewpoint. I have to find why the glass is half full. And I will tell you, I am so proud to serve as this district superintendent. I am so proud to serve as your team member, as a team of eight. And I am so pleased and happy that each day when I get up, I don't get up for a job, I get up for a call. And today's audit report is commending you as a Board of Education for doing all that you have done. So thank you. And that's part of my, uh, su, board appreciation. Um, and I think the board here understands, I don't say what I don't feel. And if I don't have something nice to say, I just don't say anything at all. So I appreciate you. I love you and thank you. And my wife appreciates you too, trust me.
Uh, Dr. Musalem, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. I will give the board at that, at, at the time of the meeting their, uh, opportunities to comment. But, uh, I'm just going to say that, yeah, we, we truly appreciate, I truly appreciate the work that we have together. All right, so with that, uh, that will close out the business portion of this evening's meeting, but I would like to now give an opportunity for members of our general public. Who have either called in or have, uh, responded via, uh, a message. So with that, I would ask that, uh, Mr. Green, come on live. Good evening, Mr. Green. I see that, uh, your green dots have turned green. So thank you.
We're green today.
So, so with that, I would just like to have our, uh, board president, uh, Madam President Janun, read a statement. Oh, no.
I'm laughing because you keep calling me president. You are the president.
Oh, I keep saying that, so my apologies. Uh, our, our Madam Secretary Janun, if you wouldn't mind, please read, uh, uh, the board's statement regarding public participation.
Yes, so this meeting of the board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed. Up to a half hour is provided for public input.
All right, thank you. So at this time, there's been no communication to me that anyone will need anything but three minutes. Um, I don't know who has our clock regarding time, so I will just ask that you do, okay, great.
I can do it.
Okay, so we definitely want to adhere to the three minute rule, and then with that, what I'm going to ask is, do we have any calls, uh, first?
We have no calls, just written questions tonight.
Oh, okay, well, that, we, we're getting practice in for the next one. All right, Mr. Green, if you wouldn't mind reading the first question.
Okay. First is from Angie Clark. She says, will, will there be specials for K4 when we, when we reopen, like gym or recess? Also, are the teachers able to get vaccinated yet? Or is it, or is the state short of meds?
Okay, with that, we're going to just refer or defer, I should say, to our superintendent.
Thank you, President Garcia. Real quick, easy answers. Uh, yes, specials will continue, that will not change. And as far as vaccinations, we are on the list. We just haven't received our date yet. And once our district receives that date, we will be sharing with all staff. So we're waiting on the Wayne County Health Department to call us and schedule our date.
Okay, thank you. Next question.
All right. What is the district doing to prepare school knowing we are overcrowded? How will the school district comply with the CDC recommendations for school?
Well, again, I, I believe that is a question that can be best answered by, uh, Dr. Musalem. Uh, so i- is that something you want to answer now, Dr. Musalem, or would you prefer to, to communicate with that person via email or with a phone call?
I, I have a quick, simple answer on that one, and if they would like more information, please feel free to contact our office.
Thank you.
Um, that is why we have not released our tentative plan yet, because we're finalizing all of that information, but please know, yes, we are overcrowded, which is a good thing. Uh, because we have kids who are learning, so we will be, uh, sharing all that information with the entire community in a very short amount of time.
Okay, thank you. And, and I don't know if there are any other questions. I mean, of course, we want to hear them, but yeah, in regards to the reopening of schools, there will be something pending, as was read in the superintendent's report. Uh, Mr. Green?
All right. How is the district working with staff members to provide a safe work conditions? What happens to employees who don't feel safe going back into work? How do you accommodate them?
I believe that would be another question that will be answered here in about, uh, two weeks.
Yes.
Um, and it, for all intensive purposes for the general public, because obviously they only knew that we went into a closed session, because part of it does deal with the unions and so on. Uh, but the administration is, is very, very, um. What's the word I'm looking for? They're working on this plan, and, uh, we will, or they will be providing a, a very in-depth, uh, presentation to, uh, to our general public. Uh, our parents, uh, so that, uh, it will be safe for all when this does happen. When it comes to fruition, it's going to be. For the best interest of our students, our staff and our support staff, so our buildings are safe to enter into.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Green?
And we have, uh, one more. From Nazreen. She says, why is our district still closed? All the other districts opened last week. Why has it taken our district that, this long? Our kids get depressed when they see other students attending school. Open the school as soon as possible.
Um, yeah, maybe I'll just defer this back to Dr. Musalem.
So I appreciate that question. We are in constant communication with our districts, uh, districts of the Wayne County. Um, there are some districts who have opened and have closed again. Uh, there, and most of the districts that are open have been open. Every school district has a different set of needs, and with our current logistics, we want to do this right. And we're right on the correct timeline. More information, I promise, will be out within the next week.
Thank you. All right, hearing nothing else coming from Mr. Green and the fact that his green dots just turned red, uh, I'm going to safely say, and he disappeared off my screen, that he has muted himself and, uh, has taken cover. Uh, Dr. Musalem, thank you, and I think I'm going to use this, but I, you're, some of your words, but I think I'll wait till the very end. Uh, so with that, um, I want to give the opportunity of our trustees on the Board of Education, if they have any questions or concerns or comments for administration. Uh, please make sure that you raise your hand. I will call on you accordingly. Um, each of you will have the opportunity to speak, and we will move from there. So with that, the first one that I did see was trustee, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, trustee Janun.
Okay, so I could not be more excited about recording while the live streaming of games. I do look forward to when we can actually record them for students, because I know. That just from, you know, having always recorded my son's games or my husband always having recorded them. Even for recruitment purposes, you know, he had players always asking him to, you know, make them copies of the game and stuff like that. So I think that that would be a wonderful thing and just once, one thing that parents don't have to worry about. That if it was already recorded for them, they could just watch the game and enjoy it. Um, the next thing was for our return to school plan. Are we going to make sure that that's translated for anybody that will need, you know, to have it translated? Okay. And then. The next thing was food service. Um, I know, like, I know that I receive notifications from RMS to remind us that, um. There's pickup, you know, that they can pick up food, um, on Thursdays. But I don't know whether any of the other schools are sending out notifications. Is there something that we can do district wide that we could just send out? Because I know the numbers have dropped a little bit. Um, and I think it'd be good just, just to send out, or I know the weather is, might affect that number, but if we could send something out just district wide. Um, and I want to just honestly. Give them a, you know, big prop because they've, they've worked through this and, you know, like, really, really worked hard on making sure that all of that is, you know, set up for the parents and. So they're, they do that every week. I think that what they said, that they go through them one day, then they package them up and then, you know, deliver or hand them out. But yeah, just want to make sure that we can, you know, like I said, if, if we don't do each individual school, we just do district wide, then they're not receiving notifications, sorry.
We can, no, we can do that. It's simple, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Janun, for your questions. Um, I saw Nadia, she's gone. Oh, oh, there you are. Nadia, you had your hand up. You have a question.
Uh, no, I just had a comment. Um, I just want the public to know that, yes, we are looking at this back to school plan. Um, and they will get to hear it. They will get to, um, give their input. Uh, and the other thing was, Mr. Schley has been doing such a wonderful job of giving us update, uh, updates. Uh, and I wanted to congratulate, uh, Solomon Seba for accepting, he got a scholarship to Madonna, correct? My son is a Madonna, a boy, and to, um, Zane. I know we said that last time, but where did Zane accept?
Campbell.
Campbell University in North Carolina, which is a division one wrestling school.
That's awesome. So congratulations to the boys, um, and we're very proud of them.
All right. Thank you, you're very welcome. Uh, trustee Kaminsky.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that even though we're not all physically back in school. That events still go on for the kids and that we're trying really hard to make a abnormal situation as normal as possible. And so I believe this week is snow coming. And, uh, I think all the kids are probably really excited about that, and I just wanted to, you know. Let everyone know that our staff works really hard to make these events happen, and we appreciate it. So thanks to, uh. Mr. Fabris and all of his staff for making this event still happen. And have a good week, everybody.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Sue. Okay, I see no other hands, and I just want to finish out the meeting. Um, so I'm, I'm just going to say this, uh, although I, I remember, uh, my friend Donna saying this. I, I, I say this, but not on behalf of the board, but I think the board will appreciate this. Uh, first, let me say thank you, Dr. Musalem, to you and to your staff, uh, and to those that were in attendance for this after, this evening's earlier meeting. Um, to the board members that have sat in on the committees, uh, this reintegration, even though, uh. It seems. Easy. It's very important for our public that is watching this or will watch us at a later date. Uh, your safety is paramount. The safety of your child, your children in any of our schools is paramount. And I take these words from Dr. Musalem, is that there is a process. Um, and in this case here, uh, it's somewhat new. So we are, or I should say, the administration is getting information from the state and the CDC on, on the process of opening and how to do it properly. And our administration is working diligently, uh, uh, to make sure that this process is not taken lightly. And that when the buildings do open, uh, we open, we open as safely as possible. Things can be tweaked. Nothing is etched in stone. Uh, but we want to make sure that we do it very safely. Most importantly, it's for the students that are in our schools and then, of course, our teachers and support staff. So please send our extension of thanks to them, uh, for providing the information and of course to our board members that sit in on that committee. Um, also, I know that I said this before, when we have an opportunity to our new hirers, we will do something for you. So welcome to our new hirers. They are not in attendance at our meetings, but, you know, I send them a round of applause and welcome them to the Crestwood family. I agree with you, Nadia. Uh, you know, there's some jobs that we just needed to fill, and finally, we're starting to get those in there. Uh, hopefully soon we will get away from Sun Belt, but, uh, thank you to the administration for looking at that. So I have nothing else. Um, thank you to the board. Congratulations on all of you for, uh, the board appreciation. And, um, you know, I value all of you and I value all of your input. I think we're going to make a great team going into this year. And look how easy and effortlessly this meeting went. We are at 8:30, so thank you. Uh, hearing none, I will now entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
So I hear a motion from, uh, trustee Barry. I believe the support was, and please help me, from trustee Janun. Am I right? No? Who supported?
I did.
I will be so happy when we're back in person. I hope I can get it right then.
Who looks just like me?
I, oh my gosh, I, my apologies. I'm glad we can, we have a sense of humor here. So with, uh, with that, we had this motion from trustee Barry, supported from trustee Kaminsky. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And with that, Mrs. Elzayet, please safe travels when you make your way back, uh, and then, well, next time, ladies and gentlemen, have a wonderful night, and we'll see you here. Congratulations. here. Congratulations, thank you.